I can't explain all that to him.
I called him and left a message. He never called me back.
This is my. I didn't know he wasn't talking to you. I just figured you were in the field. You guys were having a little more trouble talking up.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll keep you in the loop.
Okay.
So this is, uh, didn't get to town last night. Like to think about trading. So now he might be wanting to trade some easement for us to do some work, maybe.
Well, there's no money exchanged hand. Maybe that'd be the way to do it. You know, we just need like.
I'll have to.
Did I make it?
Small. That's them all.
Tiny?
So.
You missed it.
You guys started a minute early.
Yeah, I did start.
Oh, I didn't miss it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Calm meeting order, review of the agendas. Conflicts of interest with agenda.
It's no longer amended.
Yeah. It's an unamended agenda.
Original, back to the original.
That being said, we'll have the reading of the minutes.
October fourth, twenty twenty-two, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Kyle Schultz, Chairman presiding, members President Hayden, Rossberg, Schultz, Scoog, and Boch. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved. The board recognized, did I say all the names?
Yes.
You're looking at me like I didn't. Okay. Sorry. The board recognized the resignation. No, I didn't mean it like that. Like you forgot something. There's something missing. That's what I felt. Sorry. Board recognized the resignation of Lexi Bainbridge, Correctional Officer in the Sheriff's Department. A motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Boch, to approve proclamation of supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Scoog, seconded by Hayden, to approve the appointment of Sarah Carlson to the Region Twelve COG Policy Council to fill a vacancy, term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made with the board about some Summit Carbon Pipeline updates and concerns. There was a discussion with the board about reviewing zoning ordinance and possible update of utilizing a consultant. No action was taken at this time. A discussion was made with the board from Brad Hanson, Denison City Manager, about the Resolution twenty twenty-two dash thirty to support and participate with the City of Denison. Application for Reconnecting Communities Pilot Program Grand Grant Application. No action was taken at this time. A motion was made by Scoog, seconded by Hayden, to approve remodeling of Juvenile Probation Office, establish estimate of materials and labor, thirteen thousand one hundred eighty dollars. Motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned eleven fifty-one eight AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available at the courthouse on Friday four thirty PM to see the next meeting.
All right.
Nailed it.
I love hearing. Being conflict. Reports. Eric.
Actually, I don't have anything. I got a new roof in my house.
Well, congratulations.
You know, we should just have this be pay a dollar for happy.
Dollars. We do that at.
We do that at Rotary. Happy dollars and breakfast.
Hi. Yeah. Hi. Been a busy week, but it was mostly other stuff.
You want stamp that?
You know, I, other than his calls on odds and ends and. Pull out with his issue on the bridge. How much success we'll have there, but we'll work on it. I'm a little perplexed about this meeting a little later. I won't go into it since it's on the agenda, but. Did that, when, when the mother ones, we weren't here prior, Jean and I weren't here prior to Scout Energy start. Do you remember them coming in before they had already done stuff or?
I think that was the first. I was then baptized by fire just as much as you were.
Okay.
Wait here to see what they have to say.
I'm just, I just wanna, you know, see what, what they're. I have no problem coming in. I just, if they've already started or this is the first step in it. I just wasn't curious about that. That was my.
Sure.
Last time that one again.
Okay. So anyway, that was the only other thing that I had. Cause I actually did have somebody call and ask about that. Did you know anything about that?
This wind farm?
Yeah. Yeah. So. I don't really think I have anything else that is overly pertinent that I can discuss at the moment. Okay. Jerry.
Oh, what have I had going on? I guess there was a Board of Health meeting and I did not realize I looked at my email earlier Friday, but I didn't look at it later and Karen had sent out the stuff for the Public Health Meeting. And I was in Ohio yesterday with a friend that had surgery. So when I reached, when I saw her text saying there was pizza or something, I'm like, well, I didn't know it was today. The last I heard it was going to be like last night. I thought it was gonna be evening meeting. So I gotta hold a gene says, please.
I made it.
Go there. So I didn't make it to that. I have WCCA meeting coming up, but that'll be, I believe it's next Tuesday night. Other than that, it's just the normal emails. Did anybody have a chance to look through like the legislative priorities? I didn't see that yet, but they're in the, you should have received an email on those.
From ISA? Yeah.
Did anybody else read through that ISA soil compaction project funding request?
Yes. Yeah, that was, we had a long meeting about that at the end of that one day.
We did.
And actually every county, all ninety-nine kick in. What was it?
Five bucks, fifty bucks, five hundred, one of those.
Fifty bucks. Whatever it was, every, every county is gonna kick in.
Was not very much.
Yeah, which made it extremely economical. And now we'll, and that, just to clarify, was that about six hundred? Yeah, that's what it was. I thought so. Five, something, 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 just almost six.
Yeah.
Anyway, it. The moisture, the more, the more moisture the soil contains, that the more it's compactable or at least.
To an extent.
Exactly.
You can't pack mud.
Yeah, well, and then if it's, if it's mud, it just, you can tear it all up. Okay. But the more, and they, they've determined if it's below five percent moisture content on the, on the top soil in the first few layers anyway, that you'll have the least amount of compaction.
Correct.
So they're wanting to have that statistically proven by Iowa State, and it's about a fifty thousand dollar. Grant would require for them to do a, an affirmative study. All the counties decided to put an end because it could affect any one of our counties at any time with any other kind of project. I mean, you could even do this in the wind towers, say less than the working and soil moisture and such and such. So it seems to be, you know, gives you some. Some statistical data to support reasons to do things.
That will lead to the greater good for.
Exactly. For all of our farmers plus each county, whatever the case may be. So that's what that's about. And we actually just debated it back and forth for quite a while, didn't we?
We did.
So I mean, it was, it was, yeah, we actually were late for the start of the ballgame. Should've called. I drove. Anyway, the, we had a good time. Sorry.
Keep rubbing it in. Keep going. That's my job, Rob.
And the Cubs won too. So there you go.
I'm guy. That's what we do. What we do. Yeah, so it's, it's actually a good thing. And, and we, if we needed it, I think corn growers and bean growers association were actually also interested in supporting it. So we might actually, if we need more support on, on further studies. I think we could probably get, you know, it obviously affects those industries and, and so I think that, but with all the counties jumping in and that absolutely nobody, in my, in my understanding, nobody backed up.
Nope.
Cool. Got them a nice deal. So that's what that was about.
The minimal amount that it's gonna be, it'd be silly to not, that's all.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's that. That's all I got.
All right.
Sorry. Just let me clarify.
Jane?
Um, I went to my first Board of Health meeting yesterday at twelve o'clock, scurried on in there. So. It, it seems to be a little generic sometimes on some of the, you know, even with personnel updates. It's just, you know, where they've advertised to get new help. And you kind of think, well, shouldn't we discuss? You know, why there's been so many people leaving and really how, how is that department functioning? So to me, that seemed a little bit generic. You know, I can pass around the financials. Now, Jerry, Lynn indicated that they were giving some money back because of all the grants that have come in.
Oh, they just give them back.
Right. It's just not. They call it giving it back.
We use the word giving it back. Right. So I just kind of thought.
They don't have a choice.
I'll ask, I'll ask Terry about that. I'll ask Terry. I just, I really, for my first meeting, I did kind of just sit in the corner and listen.
Yeah.
But the one thing that I thought was most interesting is they have a new COVID plan and there's no mask required in the long that they're gonna go ahead. Cause as I walked in, Doug Sosman took the last mask. So there was no mask there. So after my car, I have no mask in my car anymore. So I went and found another box. Maybe they'll get a mask on within five minutes. I could clip it off. So. Cause they changed, I don't know why they didn't tell us before I walked in, they changed.
Unless it goes back to high priority.
Right. That's right. Follow the regulations. So that was, I think, good because a lot of those employees that work there are just so used to it, but they're just relieved that we've maybe made it over the pump, we'll call it, and they are not required. Because if you recall, the one gal in, in one of the other counties had actually lost her job because she was refusing to wear a mask. And then that's when they figured out that there was all this problem with the charting and whatnot. So. She should have probably just wore a mask actually. But anyways, it was a good meeting. So what, so I, as I read through the agenda, it's like, oh, there's a supervisors report. I think it's something to talk about here in five seconds. So what we talked about was a carbonic pipeline, that that should really, as we get our ordinance going, we would hope that the Board of Health will review it, make sure that it meets with the standards because. Quite frankly, that should be in their wheelhouse of things to be concerned about hazardous material coming through our county. And then when we talk about.
Actually, EMA should take care of it.
No, public health should have a.
I think public health should know about the health.
If you look at their mission statement, it is to keep the county safe from hazardous materials. Actually, hog confinement should be approved by them because it's more in their, their mission.
As well.
They should, they should know where these.
Or subject matter experts in.
They, they should. And so they were glad to hear about that. So they will, you know, be working hand in hand with us then as we get our ordinance going to kind of approve and make sure that it meets up with the standards of what they feel. And I think that having the pump house out on Vernon Boss Road even changes some of the things that we need to think about. Because all we've ever been told and talked about is it's gonna be this pipe that's underneath the ground that's gonna be safe. And then we find out right in our county, it's gonna come up out of the ground and hook up, you know? So I think that that has a different inspection level for us and so forth and so on. So, but it was, you know, all in all, a good, you know, they, they just kind of go through it. They, they are working on their annual report and this is a draft of it. And as I'm looking on it, I'm thinking, shouldn't we take the pictures of the people that are no longer, this is a draft of their new one, and I still have Lynette in it and people that. So. I didn't say anything about it in the meeting, but I certainly plan to call Karen and find out if they're going to update the pictures. I mean, I would think it was a draft. At least there'd be an X out of it for new people that have been hired. So it's pretty, it's pretty rough draft if you still have people that are no longer even on this earth in it. So that was a new, yeah. That's a draft. It should be, yeah. Well, that's a pretty rough draft.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I give it. Other than that, we just had some chatter again about the pipeline with that pipeline group. And they really feel we need to up our game on how that eminent domain is going to work. And even on the stuff from Harlan, they say that we need to appoint a compensation board to determine the value of property for the eminent domain of landowners. So, so I did take that into Martha this morning and kind of make her aware.
You do have a compensation.
But that's not. Oh, it needs to be, and I actually said the same thing, Kyle. It needs to be like real estate agents or assess.
Our compensation board is made up of that.
Our compensation board is just people that you guys pick. Our comp, we have a.
You're thinking of.
We have another compensation board.
That consists of realtors, landowners, bankers.
But that's.
I don't think it's called a compensation.
Called our, or.
No, it's not Board of Adjustment. It's Board of.
Adjustment. Is it? Adjustments?
Your taxes. They, it's for Neil Proyle and it's a different one?
I'm pretty.
Oh, I, that's why I bring it up. Cause if we already got one, then we are.
Need to double check. Cause I'm pretty sure we have that. Cause I.
I don't have it.
Quite frankly, we don't.
Let me look it up.
Is your thing charged up?
I'm looking, I'm looking.
Well.
I just.
No, sorry. Get on the website.
That, that is deep. Chart of things that we. Get a compensation board came up again from this attorney in Omaha, section attorney in Omaha that's reviewing it. Or that group of people that I told you about that coalition they have.
Maybe.
That's like.
Farmers, bankers, our shares.
There's one that.
That's after the fact.
Yeah. So.
Here's commissions to assess damage. And this is the one that's got all the bankers.
Read what it says though under that.
An insurance.
What's the title of that board? What's the?
Commissions, commissions to assess, commission to assess damages.
Right. But what's the explanation of?
Twenty-eight member commission representing realtors, farmers, bankers, auctioneers, city property owners to be available to the chief judge of the judicial district. To assess damages to property taken by eminent.
Right. Taken by.
That's October.
So is that board like?
That is primarily used by.
Probably need to get after a few of them. We've got, all of them are expiring. We're gonna have them around.
Do we have any deceased people on it?
Well, here's, now Dave, can Dave be on here? Mulbauer's on there. If he would, if he would win, will he be able to be on here?
I don't think so.
Okay, so Lyle Frazier.
Yeah.
Leroy Height. I don't know all these names. So if anybody.
I do. I do. I know. He used to be, he used to appraisals for Steve Rais.
Cause that's how that eminent domain works. It'll go in front of the judge and judge all these guys.
He picks out the ones he wants to sit in.
He'll pick from that list.
Okay.
Clarence Hoffman.
So this group of people, basically what they said is they are. So we need, we should have our compensation board ready to roll. They don't want to go to court, you know?
Yeah.
But they, they said that, that when we were talking about it, we never mentioned that step in it. And I just think that we need to be ahead of every game that's out there.
James Rasmussen, Todd Schultz, Wesley Stoltz.
Yeah.
Wesley Stoltz did.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
But I, in twelve years I've been here, they've never called that.
Absolutely. Like they've never met.
And.
Thank God.
Dean Argon Singer.
Yep.
Jeffrey Meyer, Dave Mulbauer, Stephen Reiselman, Dwayne Reiselman, sorry. Reiselman, Reisner.
He's an old English.
Dwayne, Dwayne Swenson, Steve Very, Randy Weed, John Camp. Boy, there's a crapload.
But you gotta figure out, each has different descriptions of jobs. It must have some.
Bring that up at all. They did have a.
There's, there's plenty of people.
Maybe we should just draft a letter and send it to them and say, hey, you know, sharpen your pencils, pay attention. Cause you know, this.
They're missed.
This potentially could be coming down the road.
I think that is just being proactive rather than, oh shoot, we gotta get one real quick. So when people say, oh, you guys don't, haven't done that, we have one, we're working on it and just keeping ahead of it.
We're already on it.
We also, in the agenda, they did have a new building update. And so they did talk about the RFP that we're working on. And they did mention that they've gone through it with Terry and. It was really kind of a generic conversation also, just kind of an update. Um.
Those are public health?
Yes. Yep. So. Yeah, we'll get that going. Yeah.
There's a draft in that folder. So please look at it.
Yep. Thank you. And I did tell them because we do have, you know, first in that building that we need to keep this moving.
This board needs to make decisions about the basement, what you actually want done and what needs to be part of that.
I would love it if we could convene this meeting over to that or, now, the other thing, so Public Health was a short meeting. Just discussed the update, the TB update. There's a few cases of that going on in Proffer County right now.
TB?
Uh huh. Yep. Well, a few of them. Got, had to, they didn't have the most updated staff. And I really appreciated Dr. Renninger, you know, really wanting to get more updated, what's going on. Yes, she was there. She was there. And I walked out with Marcy Larson. So, so yeah, yeah, it was, I thought it was a real active board. She had a lot of questions.
It was me.
Their financial report is, is kind of the big, their updated financial statements and getting their new book ledings. But Kim did apologize as she was out last week and Karen was out the week before, that that's kind of why this isn't moving as fast as they wanted it to. But. I really feel it's, it's not even ready for draft copy when it comes out with really old and outdated information in it. So, I'm gonna call Karen.
Is that an updated copy or is that?
It's supposed to be the draft copy of their new one, you know, just everything. So.
Yeah, it's not.
I responded on. That's all I'm gonna say about that. But otherwise, I didn't get a new rope, but I did survive my fiftieth classroom year. So.
Such as their birthday.
No, no. My fiftieth birthday.
Liar, liar.
Not even gonna go there. It was fabulous. It was a great time. Had people come from LA. Remember Al Ruschel?
Yes, that name.
His daughter Beth was in my class and she actually traveled from LA to Ruschel. That's your show. Yeah, Ruschel. Yep. She got up before the meeting and talked about why she made the trip. Just the upbringing in the small town was just so important to the fiber of who she is today. And it's really kind of nice. We had a parade.
Culture shock coming back to Denison for her.
But the funniest thing is, is I ran into her and she's like, she said to me, I'm a good American, looking for cookbook. She was looking for local cookbooks. So I guess she's a fantastic cook and just kind of wanted. And I said, it is by, you would be so glad to talk to travel all my mother laws and my mothers. Cause I just, for the right take them. So I boxed them up and she was so great. Dow City area cookbook, the Zion Lutheran cookbook. I had one from the university classes. Yeah, classes. Yeah. So that's a personal update.
Well, taken though.
Yeah.
Pay up.
Pay up. I don't know. Yeah. It was, it was so much. Unfortunately, the rumor was party at Jean's house after.
You just didn't get the memo on that?
I did not.
But you were prepared, I know.
I was.
Well.
How do I know that?
Conservation math last week. And I was absent, but I did get informed of what all took place. Biggest notable item was the estimated cost to get real water to Nelson's Park.
Is it gonna scare us to death?
Yeah, you might wanna hold on to your chair. Anywhere between six to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Wow. That's, that's.
But they are working on, there's some state grants available for water. And if they, if they close around and they can get people to sign up, it'll be cheaper. So they're looking at that right now.
Yeah, that's, that's the question. That is the cost to, to get it there.
Total cost.
Yeah. This, just.
And that would be.
Here's it from A to B.
That wasn't determined.
So if they put in, they pick up several people along the way.
Right. That all helps with the overall cost, but.
So would that, okay, so if they get several people along the way, does it cost them to hook onto it too then? Is that where the, that's where it comes in? It isn't like, oh, they think they're gonna get potential people. So then they're.
Okay. If you put together a group that's interested in getting it like that, it actually gets, starts getting cheaper.
But. I think either way you go from Charter Oak or Dow City. Probably just seeing a lot of people that along there anymore. The rural areas are very sparsely populated anymore. So I mean, hopefully a big grant will help pay for that.
So long as you're not gonna have to deal with the railroad. There's, that's what.
Well, that's why I suggested coming from Charter Oak. You don't have to deal with the railroad. You don't have to deal with Highway thirty. You don't have to deal with the river rivers. The other thing was, you know, they have a budget for a new pickup and our local dealership down here cannot. Due to supply chain issues and stuff, cannot get them so there.
Oh, conservation. I think the sheriff.
Sheriff's Department is also on the same issue. So they are actually buying vehicles outside of the county.
Well, if you have to do what you have to do.
Tried, you gotta, you gotta move forward. At least you tried to purchase locally first.
Yep, exactly.
The sheriff's one was kind of unique because he had had that ordered for over a year and they told him they couldn't get it. Because of back orders. So then he wanted to cancel the, the order and they wouldn't allow him to cancel it. But, but then they called him last week and canceled his order.
By the way, we signed.
Yeah. They canceled it. But, but so I like they're both going down to. Ankeny or Des Moines and getting the state bibs on them, I think.
Oh. If they pool together and buy two, can they do that and get them cheaper?
I, I don't know.
Your state. They're pretty scalped down anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is fine. They don't need heated and cooled seats and steering wheels and stuff like that. Bill.
The bells and whistles. Yeah. I miss the bells and whistles.
Ty and I were kind of, Paul brought us up to date on some issues going on. I see it's on the agenda, so he must be happier. Maybe some of the resolve. Consulting. I don't wanna say too much about it right now.
There were some.
Potential problems with the bridge going between Charter Oak and Ricketts. So. And then I was approached by the McMenamy family again, and I actually went out and looked at the dirt road again on my own time. I, I wanted, I didn't want them around. I didn't want Paul around. I wanted my own. But referred it to, again, to our county attorney. I think it's just.
It's in the legal world now.
Yeah, I just, I had a long conversation with them. I'm like, you know, I said, we're just at impasse here. I said, I think it's just right for both of us just to let the courts decide that it's done. But I don't, they didn't want to go that. I'm like, what? I don't know. I don't want to say.
You can't, that's the way it's gotta, I mean, what else you gonna do if neither side can come to an agreement?
I can. I don't know. It's just unfortunate that we got to this point.
Did we ever see their surveyor's report?
I, I have not, but I, I don't believe Paul has officially seen it either. So we're requesting that report.
See, that's where I think.
Seen it either.
I think our attorney was reaching out to their attorney to get that report.
That's a key part of, that had such a distinct.
In order for it to come into the discussion manner there, it has to be released to everybody.
I get it. We won't talk about it, but I get it.
So that's where that's at, to get a copy of that. So we can compare notes. I, I still think, you know, surveyors are bound by laws and such that. I would have thought that if it was a big disparity, you would have seen something, but.
You know what I do?
I don't know.
That's zero.
It's already done. It was done before we even had started this conversation. That's what started the conversation.
Can I?
So that's, that's really all I had.
Oh, I did have some. I thought I'd let you guys kind of burn it all off. Backflip.
Ty, just wanna.
Couple of questions, I had, I got two questions with stuff that's in the pocket, okay? First question is, on, when we're, are, are we having a cutoff on the bidders on this project?
I imagine.
See, it says be there at ten AM, are we saying, all right, ten AM till such and such as for viewing, if you aren't there by this time. That's it, we're not gonna come back two or three days later, or? Yeah. Do we wanna have a cut off?
That day, ten AM.
They make arrangements, they can come whenever they need to come in.
I mean, but when's your drop dead date, so we can start planning?
I don't have time for that. I mean.
I mean, that's why we want, when, when we did like the towers and stuff, you'd be here at this time. You know, you can make sure you're, if you're, if you're wanting the job, you can make sure you're here, and I mean, you can even say, you know, hey.
Or designate me even, whatever, I mean, you know.
That's kind of how, that's why I'm asking, otherwise you'll have, we could have people for weeks coming in, hey, I wanted to make a bid on. That's why I said, if we have a deadline, if we have a deadline in here, then that should be fair, right?
Right.
Right.
If no. We might have to change it.
Okay, if nobody shows up, we might have to redo one? No, let's hope that don't happen, make sure we advertise good. I think even sending out letters to all of our, our local contractors that we're aware of, can we do that?
That, that is, because you missed one and miss come back there.
That's what they always do, those smaller, you know.
Okay, we don't know everybody? That's why I asked.
Something had happened and they wouldn't get that letter or whatever.
And we forgot, like, shame on you. Say we didn't even send one because we didn't realize they. Still go to city of Dennison, now I see who's registered.
Registered.
Well, we had that.
Cause that'll be part of the qualification.
You like each other, but as I was told in there a lot of times, don't do that, because if you miss somebody, it's gonna be a trouble.
That's a great point.
It kind of like even insurance agents used to call and say, hey, you're, and if they forget one year and you don't pay them, they're on the hook, because what are you guys calling, you didn't call me, you know?
As long as we do it consistently, the way we've done all of the RFPs, which are advertised in the paper, I think. That's the best, best way.
We'll just hit the three county papers. Sure, you know, absolutely. And our website and whatever, something like that.
The other thing is, so I think that's, that solves my questions, that's all I had for questions on the RFP. The other thing is, going back to our auditor's report on. The tower stuff that time, there was a thing about taking hats off Dwayne, which I think we've done a pretty good job of helping relieve some of the duties that he's got. But the other thing was that money deal, where he was making more than, than the state allows for an extra job within the county. Did we ever figure out? I don't wanna get us in any legal trouble signing off on giving the monies. If he's, if that's, they're actually being accepted, I mean, if, are we within our legal parameters here? That's my, the only question, I mean, I don't usually have a lot of questions on this, but I do here.
I, I think we are, because didn't we decide he was like contract labor or something? I think that's what Colin told us.
So, we, we.
We're, we're fine.
We're okay?
We can double check with that again, but probably would hurt just double check to clarify that again.
Just to make sure that, I mean, because I don't, I'd hate for the board to get its messing a ringer.
I think Colin explained that to us, and I think that's.
I thought, you know, and that's just it, is I just, I'm trying to make sure that we're, we're, we're safe here.
Doesn't make sense to me, though.
And that's, and that's why I'm.
Somebody else that could do that job and shouldn't they put it out for a bid, rather than just year after year give to the same person?
Well, that's, that's up to nine one one, I just don't wanna do something. I think that's my, that's my concern.
I think it would go through our handbook for what a government or county employee. What money's, because this comes out, this is county money paying another county employee.
But it's just like Board of Health, he's under the, he's under the nine one one board.
I don't think that's as autonomous as the Board of Health, I think that, that's.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning, Sheriff. If there's a TV camera, it's your department. I don't know.
I'll duck from that. So anyway, so when, when they come in, we can ask that question and I can write to sign this.
When who comes in?
Is the attorneys are gonna come in here at some point, or should we go and ask them?
Martha's coming in with the towers. So while he's doing that, my question is, this meeting, this, you know, we amended the agenda to, to talk about the. What we're doing for the roads with the city.
Yeah.
So that their grant is actually due, so if we don't do anything till next week, we might as well not do anything at all.
Right.
So if we're gonna do something tomorrow, we need to get her done. But the other part of it is, have we decided how, where we're gonna get the money, you know, are we still any closer to, to making any commitment to helping out? The thing that, that came to my attention is that Summit is always sending us letters, they'll look at me like that.
I'm just. I'll look at you like that, then.
Summit has always been sending us these emails, saying, hey, is there any city projects or county projects that we can help with, wanna be a player in your community? Do we wanna take them up on that? Because they're coming, you know, back in the day, you thought, well, we're not gonna. But if they're going to be here forever, you know, and they're offering to give us.
I should get them now, because once you get down the road, you're not gonna get it done.
So do we wanna reach out to them and see if they wanna partner up with some, Terry said, no.
I want that dude that was in here to get ahold of them. He's the one that's wanting the money.
No, we want it on behalf of the county. I want it for the county, not for the city, so Brad has to get ahold of them, he's gonna be getting ahold of them for the city.
Right, oh, but.
Ask for the county's share of it, he's gonna ask for his part of it.
I, okay, that, I see where you're coming from.
I see where you were thinking, but if, if we put that bug out to him, then he's gonna get his project paid and he's still gonna come back and ask.
Want, come up for a must.
That's my thought.
Question this, so. This project is very important to the city of Dennison and the businesses of, you know, get people off the street, you know, for Highlands Walk.
Safety.
I mean, it's obviously determined that it's important. So we're gonna, we gotta pay for a study to determine it's important?
Is that, I thought, I think it's more, can we really, then we'll know the answers about the right away from. Which is our part of it, do, can we really build anything there? And the only way to find that out is to pay somebody to.
Man, I think you're bringing the state involved, man.
And that's kind of the other part of that, you know, you know, all the county would have to do is say.
Yeah, south side coming in now, it's welcome to be a north side, because the south side's got the rail tracks.
Yeah, no, it's gonna be, so it connects up to our path in Yellowstone, you know, so. It'll come from the trailer park and they kind of wind up and come through, you know, so we're hooking up to another one of ours. But I, I can understand why the city doesn't wanna pay for, you know, and the county actually has to put their blessing on. So if we're putting the blood, just a blessing, yeah, we're sure, well, whatever you guys are doing, but if we make kind of a. Statement out there that we would do, you know, the percentage of what the mileage of the county actually is. But wait, waiting till next week, there's no reason. Brand is actually.
Is it so much per mile as the study, or, I mean, we could always say, you know, just take our two miles off there and. Cause it. To be, we'll be the last one on the list to get two miles put in anyway, it's not like we'd be the first ones on the list.
A little bit of that speaks to the connectivity of our county township, you know, makes a biking path from Vale to Dennison would be. An awesome thing to have, and if that goes on through and then we can hook up to Down City, you know, it's just kind of the start of our connectivity to. You know, because the worst thing that I ever see is people riding their bicycles, especially up Dona Reed Road, you know, they're hiking up that hill, can barely make it, you can't really get around. They have no place to go to get over, so if you had a biking path, a walking path, you know what, if they had a walking place to walk on Dona Reed Road. I might actually walk, you know, but I'm not gonna walk on a highway, I'm not gonna walk in the ditch, you know? I said. That, and that's kind of the question.
Before you continue in this discussion, that's not on the agenda.
Decide if we need to have that meeting, which was on the agenda, we got an email from our attorney.
So now we're talking about a meeting, yes, I think we need to have a meeting sometime soon, because like you said. Twenty-four hours is necessary for posting this agenda.
Right.
So, based on the clock.
We need to do that? Do we need to do that, like, real soon?
Real soon.
Yeah, like the applications due tomorrow.
But while you're talking about that.
That's right, I remember that.
I wanna let you know that I have a pair of partner with the St. Rose for a long. From eight, that starts at eight forty-five, I gotta go to church with my first graders, so.
Where can you go?
Depends if I wanna leave before communion. It would be easier for me to do it like eight o'clock, get it done so I can be there by eight forty-five.
Four hours.
Cause I got a meeting in eleven in Carroll.
Thank you.
It's kind of an important one.
Unless we do it Thursday, oh, Thursday's too late, never mind.
Here's another part of it, if we call this meeting, we should, can we do it via Zoom? I don't know if I can Zoom from the church.
Can we talk, is this on our agenda today?
No.
We're trying to establish if we're gonna have a meeting.
That's all, we're trying to establish.
I would only say the one thing that I'm interested to see what kind of success would be to building alongside the road, because like I've said, I've always wanted to hurt Nelson's and.
Yeah.
And.
And that's that connectivity part that we talk about all the time.
How many people can meet tomorrow, and if we do, what time you wanna meet? And it can't be before nine forty-five.
Yep.
That's if we post it right now.
Right, exactly.
Can we do it after dinner?
I could probably be here at ten, you know, that would be, just come up here and do what we have to do and then go back, because.
Isn't there a chance?
You can call in.
From the combine.
Yeah, can I zoom from the pickup?
That can't be dangerous at all.
I just wanted to bring that up because.
I can do it from Carroll in the pickup.
Like Terry said, too much, too little, too late after, after tomorrow, so you have a side way, you wanna do it or you don't want it.
There you go.
And I'm okay, I can do it tomorrow.
Right on the fence.
I'm open.
I'm just. Where? City of Dennison will not. Finance this application unless we're players in it, I mean, we can't, they're not gonna do. Call the money up to, to find out the need assessment, unless we play along. I mean, we got wheels that we have to put in place to make everything happen.
And when do they need our money?
I'm sure tomorrow afternoon.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know that.
These are the things that. And they gotta check, they're right, I don't, I, I guess, I don't want, that's for them, that's for that. Government entity over there to decide if they could float the whole check and we reimburse them at some point for it or something, I don't know.
Right, because we're only talking about six thousand dollars at the very most, right?
Yeah.
And that's more than our allotted two miles worth.
Right.
Based on.
That was half of the cost.
Yeah, I'd like to be prorated on what, what's in the account.
I was thinking it was like seventeen hundred and thirty-four dollars a mile. According to their mileage count and the total cost. So. I just don't, I get this uneasy feeling in my stomach. There, there again, we shouldn't be talking about this right now. Let's have a meeting, let's have a meeting.
Ten thirty tomorrow.
Well, I just read this, it says, we will be done around ten thirty, so.
Ten o'clock.
But they're not, no, I. Doing the right to life rosary.
What time, Drew, ten thirty?
Well, I meet at eight forty-five at the church and then I'm gonna make some crafts and I'm gonna do a rosary and put it right to life, and that should be done about ten thirty.
So for ten thirty, we have it, and I can be in Carroll at ten thirty, then sitting there, but I'm, I'm walking out the door at ten, five to left.
And I would be glad to leave at ten o'clock, just say I have to and we.
Okay, and so you have to do a meeting, so ten o'clock, we could do it?
Ten o'clock.
I would sacrifice my red level craft to.
You, you're sure you're able to teach coloring within the lines?
Gluing ice cream sticks together.
You know, I'm sure I can teach that class, but Nana's gotta go.
Painting some porcelain. Ceramic.
Oh, you know what, yeah. No, no, well.
No more than usual, but.
No more than you don't have to show your face on.
But ten o'clock meeting?
Can I break, run this by you, what the attorney told me, before he started? Uh, they, they thought that it would, is it possible to put off? The one item, a line item on here for a week, so they can do the research and make sure the work.
Um, I don't, we've been, oh, we've been doing this all along, I don't know that we're in violation, I think it's good to go. I know, I don't.
Do you?
Absolutely. I mean, they should still check it on.
They can still check it, so, do you think it's safe to sign this legally? That's my question.
We've been doing it for months.
We can adjust as well.
Let's just get started.
That's only, that's what I was.
This is just the first quarter.
So we have to do a study now to see how logical it is to put anything. You know, city side.
Yeah, after what they decided, they said we've been doing, we can come back, okay.
What do we got? What do we got here? Still working on a bridge, huh?
Yep. They're getting steel in, hopefully, maybe for that next week, which would be really, really good, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, it's, it's moving along, it's been really good, so that's helped out, and, you know, we get that thing for next week, I'll be really happy. And just get the railing put in and backfill.
Moving along, where we get some through what the challenges they've been faced with labor wise.
Yeah, they're gonna get it done, that's the main thing. Yeah, so, something happens. Could have thought things like this would be such a damn problem. Yeah, I know. March twelfth, twenty twenty.
I remember right where I was the day you said that.
Anyhow, our projects. To move along quite well, so it'll be done down at three hundred street later this week and moved to two eightieth between R and S. And, you know, we're. That, that might be about the end of it, we'll see, because then we're gonna, we're gonna take these trees out down here at the dome, we'd like to do a little shaping and grading there to get that to drain. We'll see how it plays out and how the weather goes, but it's been a great year, so, let's see how, how that goes. Bridge Crew, they're working on pavement patching, and, you know, there's no good time for pavement patching, ours is probably not a good time either, but we gotta get it done. And it just kind of seems like the. Maybe illustrate to the, to the users, how much damage can be imparted on our road by the heavy loads, but they're, they're, they're making it all work. There's not a lot of patches. The roadside crew, they're out mowing and they're gonna finish the seeding this week, so, kinda wrap everything up. So, kinda wrap everything up, might do a little bit of temporary, you know, like cover crop seeding, um, down there on the three hundred street, so.
It'll get raining.
Trying to grow, only rain, it'll turn into a dormant seed.
Only good thing about lack of rain is everybody can't tell how good they had their combines set when they did beans.
Yeah, that'll take a while for that to show up, take, take a while for that to show up, the soybean cover. Uh, granular surfacing, uh, this is with pallet materials, so, uh, if you recall, we, we purchased and it's already been made seventy thousand tons from Stratford. Um, and so, last year, we, uh, we did the same thing with Stratford, I think we were a little lower than that, maybe sixty-five thousand tons, and then we did twenty-five thousand tons. And that's all we got last year, so we didn't really add anything to our stockpiles, if you recall, back in the spring, I was a little worried where we're gonna go with all the material on our roads, cause we had such a mild winter. But if we did it, putting a lot of it on the roads and our roads have a lot of crap on them, we really need some rain before it freezes, time comes down. Uh, but anyhow, um. I, you know, you just never know, so I'm kinda saying, hey, let's get, order another twenty-five thousand ton from Lake View Pit. And, uh, put that, you know, for stockpile basically to. Stockpiles wherever we took out of them. And not knowing what the spring brings, I mean, if you have a normal spring, we're gonna put a lot of, we're buying a lot of fresh limestone right now, it's probably the best we've ever had in terms of. Getting crushed limestone in our outlying shops, our outlying stockpiles, we got some nice piles out there.
We did.
And the guys have been, you know, shagging it out there from ten street, and so, uh, so we're gonna be sitting really good come springtime for material. But, uh, this is just making sure that we have material, plenty of material on there. Are there counties that have two hundred thousand tons sitting around? You know, just, uh, yeah, in the event of a, you know, that's two years worth of supply. Yeah. Well, yeah, it's just kinda like.
It don't go anywhere.
It's kinda like corn in the bin, it, it's, it's got a really good shelf life, so, um, uh, you know.
Torn open can get blew.
They can't, you gotta be really careful.
This is way better pile of rock versus a pile of corn.
Unless you have a lot of them collected. Yeah. Oh, rock collectors, yeah, yeah.
Well, I entertain a motion to approve those two purchases and, you know, this is something we've, we've struggled with in the past, and the auditors have deemed it to be okay to purchase.
Well, we can make the purchase, we're not paying for it, we're just approving that we're gonna get it into a contract with them, and then when it's made, this, this, we don't pay for it till we get it. And the Stratford, the Stratford material, we don't pay for till after July first either, so, so really no issues here. Uh, other than the fact that, um, Halless, we've, we've struggled really with getting the material in a timely manner, so the twenty-five thousand from the Lakeview area. Is going into shop. So we, we don't have to wait for that to go on the road, we've got enough from Stratford and from the Anthem pit, uh, which will be made this fall. To, it's just to put on the roads. I'd make that motion to approve purchasing the granular surfacing materials.
Moved and seconded to. Item number four. Purchase of the material from Lakeview, Halless and Anthem pits.
Can I just add a little bit to the discussion, uh, so anyhow, the price for Anthem material is the same as it was last year. The price for Lakeview material was twenty-five cents, we didn't get any last year, it's twenty-five cents a ton higher than it was two years ago. And so it's seven seventy-five, the material that we're getting from Stratford is seven oh three, which is pretty typical, it's a little bit lower, has some, some crushed limestone in it. But we've got to haul it another twelve miles. Okay, so it's more expensive. It's all, you know, and we kind of acknowledge that, that it's more expensive. But it's got more limestone in it. It's got ten percent crushed limestone in it, and, uh, and so, uh, that adds some value to it. Well, and by the time we add that to that, that doesn't. Probably bounces off pretty decent, or actually maybe ahead. Yeah, that, I, I did a detailed analysis this time, but it's, it's close, but it, generally speaking, it's more expensive. To get the material from the Stratford, because of the transportation, cause even if you put it, which, you know, an hour payment, close to nineteen to twenty cents a ton mile. But, you know, twenty times twelve, okay, is two dollars and forty cents. Just additional transportation cost, the whole of that extra twelve miles. Let me ask you a question, now. When we're hauling that, I mean, considering that we may do less grading next year. Do we have the trucks necessary to where we could actually pull our guys to just do the Stratford stuff to help reduce some costs? Well, you know, there's, there's, there's options, I, I don't think we would have the, the. We wouldn't have enough manpower, you know, enough trucks, basically, to answer your question, to do all of that on our own. So here's what I see, kind of a gradual transition, so I'm getting pricing on it, on a semi tractor and new trailer. So we can look at that in the twenty twenty-four budget that we'll be approving here. In, uh, in January, February, March probably, um, but, uh, to just kinda start gradually moving towards that, you know, and maybe, maybe. You know, we're probably not gonna have a fleet. Uh, I don't know, I don't know what the future holds. Um, but, you know, to really do it effectively, we, we probably need eight to ten trucks. I was just talking about, just, just, just the Stratford, because. Oh, Stratford seventy thousand tons, that's a long ways away, um, and so, um. We, we could tie, you just have to have, you just have to commit, that's all we're gonna do. You know, if we shut down the great crew, we shut down the bridge crew and said, okay, we're gonna put all you guys in trucks, we're gonna haul gravel also. We can get it done. Yeah, I mean, that's all we would do.
There's an, I see a, uh, kind of a hidden saving on that, though, is we got our gravel haul done in about two months. With that Stratford, before that, we were, we were going from, ma, in the May to Thanksgiving sometime.
No.
Yeah, we're still, so, I mean, I was tying it up, basically, three of our employees. First, four or five trucks a day hauling, but they had to be there, and now they're there and they're getting twenty trucks a day just consistently, so. There's, there's some underlying savings by purchasing that from Stratford, and I think it may be sent a little notice to Halless that, you know what? There are more players in, in, there's more efficiency right here, so.
That's why our pricing's worth that.
I was gonna say, that, that, that consistent pricing, I think, is reflected that we're getting some from someplace else, so.
So I mean, that's, that's really why we were able to just, we, we just decided, hey, you know, the, the challenges of getting the material on the road when we need it. Uh, you know, outweighed the additional cost that we're gonna pay, because, you know, putting material on the road now is. Not what you wanna be doing. You know, that's right. You wanna, you wanna, you know, done in July, so you get some nice rains and you can gradually work it in, build the crust, and you go into freeze up and you don't have all this loose material. Unfortunately, Mother Nature kinda plays a role in that too, and this year, we haven't got the rain that we needed. And we didn't have a lot of snow. We didn't have snow, yeah, so we were lucky, so. Yeah, and I've been looking at that, like, like, yesterday, I went out to that one tower. Would it be better this time of the year when we are loose, if they were building that towards the middle? Oh, with, the. The rock. Granite material. Yeah. Well, we, you know, we wanna crown, we wanna crown, but, yeah, it's just a dilemma right now, because you've got all the harvest traffic. If you put all that loose material in the middle of the road, you're gonna have washboards all over, you know, and, and then, but if you put it out to the edge. Then you got, you know, a little windrow laying there that can create problems too with the bigger equipment kinda moving out. We just kinda basically blade it like normal blade, and just lay it out there, you know, and, uh, and, and you're always trying to build the crown, but the roadway tops are so hard right now, you know? And that's why we got scarefires on everything, so it's really bad, you use that scarefire, bear down, you try to work through those, but we just need moisture. Yeah. We don't have moisture.
It's kind of a catch twenty, put a scarefire down, you create more loose material, and it's trying to smooth out more loose material, and it just keeps amplifying.
Cause you don't have moisture. Yeah. Yeah.
Nothing to tie it back.
Nothing, yeah, and so, uh, anyhow.
We offer the.
Yeah.
Item number four.
But anyhow, I just wanna share those prices with you before you take a.
I was going to ask for those.
Okay.
We got a motion and a second to approve item number four, the purchase of the. Uh, gravel from Halless and Lakeview and Anthem, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright. Item number five.
Okay, so this is the, uh, engineering services agreement, Calhoun Burns and Associates, we need to, you know, just keep moving forward on bridges and, and, uh. And hope everything falls into place. It usually does, but anyhow, uh, our pay system has, you know, we're, we're in pretty good shape, this, you know. Uh, I guess back up a little bit. As a philosophical approach to this kinda change, when our bridge funding started to drop. You know, cause we were working, we're, it was like, well, let's pick off some of these, on these high line gravel, these critical gravel roads, let's try to use some of the federal bridge money on some of those. All of a sudden, it dropped, and it's like, well, maybe we better be focusing on our paid road bridges, because we can build a lot of those bridges on our gravel, we can do that ourselves. But on the pay system, we can't, and so, you know, we're working on this one between Charter Oak and Ridge just right now, you know? Are these bridges gonna fall in today, in the next five years? No, no. They're aged, they're showing some deterioration, this one is posted, okay? And it's narrow. And it's narrow. Say it's, yeah, it's word deck on it, and it's just, it's, it's a good time to move on and get that bridge replaced. Cause you don't wanna be behind the curve, you don't wanna be, you know, cause it takes so long to develop the project, okay? So we're gonna focus more of those federal funds on paid roads in the next three to four years. This is one, we're gonna go, so there's other ones right up here, and it only drains three miles, it's a little short bridge on a tributary, it's solely on E sixteen. And it can be a box coal, so that'll be good, so we're gonna replace that, much like we did over here, especially, you know, we took that little bridge out for a box coal, yeah, and you don't even notice there. You know, you get rid of all the railing, all the guard rail, all that stuff, so, so that'll be the next one they're gonna work on, and again. The deck is in, yeah, if you, if you drive over that E sixteen, you'll see we've done some patching on it. You know, so, um. Let's get it done, so it's kind of my flash, get, get it off of there, uh, the one over here on M fifty-five in the city of Bayle, we requested. That that be included on the city bridge fund list, because even though it's on our farm and market road. Uh, it's in the city of Bayle, so it would be eligible for city bridge funds, which would be a hundred percent from a different funding source than our standard bridge, bridge money. So that's been put on there, that bridge is gonna continue to get a little bit worse, and if you posted, it kinda makes it break a little higher, so you may see it posting on there next year. Okay. A minor one, kind of what was done here, um, but anyhow, uh. One that kinda caught me by surprise was the bridge over the railroad here in Denison, okay, and, uh. You know, I know it was posted last year, I don't remember the initial number, but it's forty, forty-eight. Which one? Oh, did you turn off Highway thirty south, first bridge? Anyhow, uh, I was under the impression, you know, thinking that it was done because of the special haul vehicle rating, which we have a number of those, okay? So, a number of those were rated, posted, not because of condition, because of just the capacity, carried the load. But it turns out, this has a condition issue, and so I'm gonna meet with, uh, Eric, somebody from the city, engineer that, uh. Uh, Calhoun Burns, who does your plant of our ratings as well, um, and take a look at that bridge and, uh. And see what that posting revision might land, but that's, you know, preliminary estimates, you know, two and a half million dollar range. That was one hundred percent within the city limits of Dennis. Uh, but it's on our road, important farm and market road, and, and I know in the past, there's been some, some sharing of, of the burden there, so. What I'm hopeful of, it's been, it's submitted for the city bridge replacement list too, which we pay for. And it's already posted? Yes, yeah, but they're looking at even lowering it more. So this is what happens, you won't really wanna avoid, and so, uh, so that may play a role in, you know, some of what happens, but, uh. But anyhow, I, I put in a request to see if we can get some state. Uh, county bridge replacement funds makes a special one-off on the, on the city replacement, cause the city will pay a hundred percent, but only up to one point five million. So. And it's a two, two million. Well, very high level preliminary estimates are twenty half million, so we're, we're gonna try to figure out where we can get them at eight dollars. And try to move the project forward, that is a complicated project, simply because of the U P railroad. You're gonna get any money out of that? No.
No.
So anyhow. You know, so that, that's one of our page system that, that, uh. You know, and then there's one up here, Carroll County, Carroll County is responsible for all the bridges on Carroll County, that line of this, and, uh. They, there's one up here that they posted as well, but it's probably gonna, that would be split fifty fifty with them. And so that's kind of on that, that list too, on another one, a paved road, but, uh. Anyhow, most of the stuff that, that we're responsible for, that's our jurisdiction, um, we're in pretty good shape, you know, so, uh. It just kinda all bears watching, there's another little deal I'm working with the, uh, railroad down here, BNSF. So there are a number of overpasses and underpasses on the railroad. And we've done to replace that some two of them, one on Ford Street, one on three hundred and ninety street, where we buy the plank. They do all the work, which is really good, because if you're doing the work on the railroad, you have to have road protected liability insurance, you have to pay a thousand dollars a day for flaggers, all kinds of crazy stuff. So if they do it, and I mean that, we just buy the plank. So, it's a bridge that our road traffic crosses, but it's owned by the BNSF railroad. And so it's really been a great part.
Was that it?
Uh, this one's on three hundred and sixtieth street. Just on, uh, one forty-one. A mile and a quarter, that's the one that I'm talking about, the deck's in really poor condition, and so we did two just like that, a number of years ago, and this one. The deck has continued to worsen, it's timber deck, so we buy much plank, we'll do that over the other. Bit for that for five years. So kinda working on that as well, so got a little lost track on bridges, but it's kinda good to give you a little.
So you're looking for nineteen dollars, one hundred and thirty dollars.
That's to do the preliminary engineering and design, and then they'll come back with the final. So borings and all that stuff, so get us to the point for preliminary. I'd make that motion.
Then moved by Ty, saying by Eric to approve item number five, consulting engineering service agreement, Calhoun Burns, in regards to the bridge on E sixteen. Any further discussion? And none will proceed to vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number six, uh, purchase of Monroe's small plow hydraulic system, mounting and all equipment. Third party dump body, and finished painting the dump body in the mall, fifty-three, seven, sixty.
Yeah, so the last time we did a single action truck was in twenty eighteen. We bought everything out here and we put it all together. And, uh, it took a long time, you know, the guys are busy, and, uh, so, um. This time, I mean, Hawkeye does all of our, mother, they're working on our ones right now, it doesn't come cheap. Uh, and I talked to the guys about that, I said, you know, so, so here, the only thing there, they would be selling this is the plow and hydraulics, okay? Uh, the dump body. No, 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 yeah, they're, they're dump by, the hydraulic, hydraulic systems, pumps, valves, controls. And the, the plow, and then installing everything and painting everything, okay, that's what this is. Okay, so the chassis, we've already approved in order through Cornhusker. Uh, the dump body, which is an Everest, which is that one that dumps forward instead of backward, and it's the ones that's got, the one, the guys really preferring it. I really, I, I do think, I mean, they're, they're, they work really well. Uh, so that would come through McQueenie, or McQueen, um, and, and we've already proved that. So this really is approving, the, the difference between now and in twenty eighteen would be. They would also be putting everything together and painting it and bringing it fully, like, to us. They give the dump body, uh, from the other vendors, put all, put everything together, instead of it all coming down. I talked to Andy and Jack about it, you know, and. It sat there, it, it just because there's so many other things that go on in their world, it's hard to stay focused on building a truck. And that's what they're probably would be doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we found that challenge. Although the guys did a great job with the plows that we referred, you know, just. Has a little more complications. So that's kind of what, that's why this is as high as it is. And.
Anyway. Well. I'd buy it. Want to be looking for a motion to approve it, I guess.
For all what we're getting, it doesn't seem outrageous, you know, and.
Well. It's costing us about thirty grand to have it painted and everything put together. But if anybody has paid any shop rates.
Well, just.
I mean, I was kind of guessing.
I mean, if we had to bill our shop rates and the time they put into it.
We'd have that, right? Andy and I talked about that, you know?
We'd probably have more into it, because these guys are, do this on a daily basis and they can do it a fraction of the time is.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it seems like a lot when you step back and anybody that's had any shop worked on anything.
Going up to a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five on the weekends out here quality, so it tells you what your shop.
So, so that's, yeah, I, I think these guys were like at a hundred and twenty-five or even, I don't know. There, there wasn't, because I asked him one time, I said, what is your shop rate? It's a lot lower than like our local equipment dealers were.
Sure.
So. I'd make the motion to approve it.
A second.
They're moving, saying to approve item number six, snow plow hydraulic system and mounting all the equipment.
Yeah, and again, this is all, you know, twenty, this will be a year from now. So we gotta prove this stuff on our budget, you know, I'll be pretty nice.
So this price will be locked though.
Yeah, yeah.
But I figured.
Yeah, all of these, I mean, clearly to everybody that we're working with, this is the price. No changes.
No changes.
Okay, unless something clearly, you know, we add more, you know.
To change your.
We're not, but we're not changing because we're pushing the COVID button anymore. It's over, it's passed. This is it. We're agreeing to it. This will be something.
Lock in your parts and your, your material costs, because it's done, buddy, we're done. Yeah.
All right.
Any further discussion? You're not, proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed?
A year from now, it might look pretty deep.
Well, we got our motor raiders. I didn't put it on here, but. We have got some agreement consensus on Kimwood, and so I'll be working with Martha. I don't know if you all saw the.
Oh, I am not.
But anyhow, yeah, there was. Claim, so that property's all.
It's evolving, huh?
It's evolving, yeah, yeah. And Brad came up here and we spent about an hour one day. Talking about how to make this thing kind of come together. And, 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 you know, so it, it, it all fell into place. So I'll be working with Martha to talk about the process and. But anyhow, since it's a unincorporated municipality, I'm gonna defer to her as far as how to handle. The proceedings. I'll work with her to get a legal description together. We're making all the streets. And alleys in Kimwood, except for the one, the railroad street that fronts on Kimwood Road.
Are you gonna be here this morning, yeah?
I was hoping to get out of here about ten thirty, to be honest with you, but I can be if I need to. Yeah, okay.
I'm going.
Yeah, sounds good. And then. Towers, we, we've got Vale and now City Complete. They're gonna do Charter Oak this week and Manila is just a matter of putting some granular surfacing on. Sean said, soon as they start work, we can spread a little on there, but we don't want to get a whole bunch of material, loose material there. Until you need it.
I went out and cleared off Charter Oak, because the cow volunteered trailer, so I would take care of it. Stands too with my tractor.
Is it part of the crops harvested down there?
I have no idea. I can't get all the stand. I mean, I get down there, I'll be able to tell. Okay.
Yeah, just keep it going.
Takes us to our ten fifteen item here. First floor restroom, Brittany, is she on the Zoom? Brittany, are you on the Zoom?
It looks like us and us alone.
Jake.
They didn't know we commented. Okay, never mind. Thank you. Appreciate it.
She's got. Ten minutes to get on here. Do we have a number? Do you?
I do not. Oh, thanks.
We've got somebody. Brittany?
Can yours, Brittany?
Unmute.
Now can you hear me? Good morning.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Perfect.
All right. You, we, you have our undivided attention, Brittany.
I really, just for this meeting, I'm just, I sent the drawings and specifications. They all say preliminary right now. I need the board's approval for these to go out to bid and we will send them to. Out to bid and the dates. I'll pull up those dates just for a reminder here. On kind of what we're putting in there for the bidding construction schedule. Is that the pre-bid will be on October twenty-seventh at ten AM at the courthouse. The receipt of bids will be on November tenth at two PM in the courthouse. The plan is, as long as prices and everything come in, that your regular board meeting on November fifteenth, that they would be accepted. The bids are good for thirty days. So if it takes long, you gotta do it the following week and discuss some things, make sure. That's no problem. You have thirty days from November tenth to accept the bids or reject them. Beginning construction, we are stating that it is a contractor-led start date. Substantial completion is to be from eight weeks after construction begins. Owner will allow the contractor to begin work once all critical path materials, that's anything that you, they need in order to get the pieces done. So that, in my mind, is all your plumbing fixtures, your pipes, your. Tile, pretty much for your project, for how small it is, about everything's a critical path material. And they have to have those in hand before they start. And that way it doesn't lead out to forever and you give them whatever time they want. We say that the project must be started by May first of twenty twenty-three. And they. Could, you know, if they come back and say, we, I would say if they come back and say, we don't have X, Y, Z critical path materials. And it won't be here before May first, then that's the discussion between the board and the contractor. Can we live without that piece? But if it's obviously a toilet or something, we would change the, that date of when they have to start by, because. We're not gonna start this if they can't get toilets or something, or if we have to find something else. The drawings that are going out. Are, we have all the ADA. Information on there. The demo, what they're taking out, which is the ceilings and then everything inside, basically once you pass this corridor wall. And then we're putting in those six restrooms. Their respective items.
We're gonna have to shut that entrance off for period of construction, Brett.
Correct. I have data that it is gonna be used by the public and that they have to put appropriate signage up for exiting. To get out other ways instead of this exit is closed. But I imagine they'll probably put something wall up here and here, keep the dust and keep everyone out and give them space to work in here. Little bit, just. Review, we're doing tile floors, we have. Doors that match the existing. And that is one item, just doors, their lead time keep increasing, they're not going down. So that would be one item. I can see that they say I can't get doors before March first, and then we discuss on. Maybe postponing a little bit longer. Right now with doors that they should be in that timeframe and be able to get them, but that time just keeps going longer and longer on doors, so. We're doing drop ceiling. Little bit, here's the plumbing. Taking out all the existing mechanical plumbing. In these areas. And here's the new. Going below ground, and then here's the water above ground in your basement area here. There's a new water heater. For these bathrooms. In that area, something I know I talked to Terry about was a little bit on, we are telling them. For the plumbing side that they have to connect to the existing vent system to get outside. What we don't know is if there is an existing vent system, it's kind of, it looks like there's maybe a start of one. That's why we're saying to connect, but. Also, we don't know if it truly meets code today. So that would be something, it's gonna be a little bit of a discovery. And we might need to come up with a new way to get up if there's not a vent system. At the time of the remodel and before that, well, before when this building was built, there was no such thing as venting out plumbing. They figured out that that cut does bad smells. And so about the time of this remodel, they were connecting it into the main pipe. Which is not allowed today, because they figured out that that's too much gases, that's going too far. And many reasons, and so that's not allowed today. And that might be what is happening right now. But we really, until we open up the walls, can't verify that. So just want to let you know that could be a change order coming once those, that is opened up. And then each one is getting an exhaust out. That'll help also. And then each one also has a floor drain kind of in the center of the room. The floor is not going to be sloped at all, but there is a floor drain. In the center of a room that you could mop to if something would happen in any of the restrooms. Plumbing side, electrical side. That's the demolition. There is, these are existing panels into that basement. There will be a new panel. Into here, because these panels are all maxed out. So there will be a new panel for this work here. There is a light fixture, a main light fixture in the ceiling, two by four, with new. Two by twos in the hallway and exit signs, light up exit signs outside the doorway and outside the doorway. And then there's a light fixture over top of the. Vanity, yep. And then these two restrooms, because they are on the exterior wall, there is supplemental heat. On the wall, I'll be a kind of a. Piece on the wall for supplemental heat, heat in those two.
Will then be on a dial that actually can be controlled, so we don't have somebody turning up to ninety degrees in there, because they don't like the cooling.
They should, they will be connected to, they'll register this room and whatever the main building area is set to. So if this room isn't keeping up with that, they will turn on supplement the main system.
Yeah, thank you.
And then just, we did. The toilets and stuff there a little bit. We tried to find something more vintage looking to be in the timeframe of the courthouse. So that, I don't know what the toilets look like with just the U-shaped commercial top on them. Here is the sink. But still ADA compliant. With. Automatic faucets. We. You guys are the only piece of equipment that I have listed that you guys are providing is the soap dispensers. Those, right now you're getting switched out by who supplies them for you, and you don't know what they're getting replaced with and stuff, so we're not putting those in the contract. So those are happening. Everything else we have by the contractor. There's. Hand dryers in there, and these are not the booster heater hand dryer, so it should, there should be more quiet. Than the real loud ones. Is there any questions, concerns, or do we have approval to go out to bed?
Do you have any consideration for the janitor's closet or anything and stuff for, for supplies and cleaning supplies and stuff like that?
Where do we store all that now?
West wall in the, in the bathrooms.
I would interfere with ADA compliance, I think.
Yeah. So there's none stored in these restrooms. I. I think your overstock is down in the basement. So I don't know your existing janitors, that there's a shelf that you guys can put up there for the daily fills, but there is no place for. Kind of restocking right inside the restrooms. We are very tight for ADA compliance on these. And one of the things, so I, I talked to Terry about this, is right now it's ADA, is the leading in. For compliance for disabilities. One of them that is not approved by Iowa yet, but it is approved by other states, is the ANSI two thousand seventeen. Which is, makes everything a little bit bigger than what it is today. Kind of the main difference is back when the ADA was written, it was aimed for wheelchairs. People aren't using wheelchairs anymore. They're using mobile carts, which actually have a bigger turning radius than what wheelchairs are. So we did do this. It's not labeled as such, but we did do all of these restaurants in compliance of the ANSI two thousand seventeen. Just knowing in the future, it could be next year, it could be while this is in construction, it could be three years from now. But I, just knowing the other states have adopted it, I have a feeling Iowa would, on the, at some point in the future, will be adopting it. So these restrooms do comply with that. Which also made us even tighter on constraints. But it works.
Love to figure something else out for our.
Stores.
Safari.
Right. Slides it downstairs. I mainly were wondering about the cleaning stuff, because otherwise where, you know, he goes.
You could put it in Jake's room.
Well, these, I've never seen. Bathroom plans so detailed, so I think you, you kind of.
Come a long way from out housing.
Yeah.
Where's the catalog?
I guess we would just be, you're looking for us to approve these plans, so you can get them out, huh?
Yep, so we'll, we'll change them, except they don't say preliminary and different things, then we'll get them out. So I'll send a link and you can share it with any of your, if you have a local contractor, a local subcontractor or anything. It's Beeline and Blue is our main website that we use and they'll host them and they'll share them to other services online. You can share that link with any of your local people, but I would tell them that they should log into and make an account on Beeline and Blue. Just that then any other contractors or subcontractors know that they are looking at it. Because they'll keep a list of everyone that has checked out the plan there.
Could you share something with me so we could put it on our website?
Yep. I'll share that with you once it's live. Usually it takes, once I send it to them. They double check everything, make sure all of our specifications, all the specs and everything line up. So it usually takes anywhere from twelve to twenty-four hours to get it live. And once it's live, I'll send you the link.
I'd make the motion to approve these plans.
Been moving the second is to approve the first floor restroom plans for renovation. Any further discussion? Here now, proceed to vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Alright, pass Brittany.
Alright, thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Be in touch, thank you. Bye.
Hey, how are you? Thanks for coming today.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it. So.
What do you got going on here?
Presentations and about the company that I work for. So I don't know if you want to pass it around or how we want to. I appreciate it, thank you.
Well, the floor is yours, I guess.
Thank you. So I'm looking at her, I work for a company called Liberty Power. We are looking at Crawford County as a potential location for a wind project. Potentially solar, depending on what we hear from landowners in the community. So to give you an idea of what I was just going to speak to today, I'm going to talk with the company I work for, so Liberty Power. I'm going to run through what our thoughts here are today, what we're looking at proposing, which is a two hundred megawatt wind project. The area that we're looking at, how turbines have evolved, the proposed project timeline, if this project proceeds. And then just some, at the end, just my contact information for everyone so that you're aware who I am. So let's look to the next page for the company history. So the company I work for, Algonquin Power and Utilities Corp. We were, we started in nineteen eighty eight as a developer of small hydro projects in Ontario, Canada. Since then, Algonquin has been traded both on the Toronto Stock Exchange as well as the New York Stock Exchange. The side of the business I work for Liberty Power, we are the non-regulated side of the business. And then the regulated side of the business is Liberty Utilities. That's where you see your water, hydro, electricity. Between those two companies, we have about three thousand four hundred, four hundred employees. And we operate in about sixteen different jurisdictions within the United States and then five Canada. So the map on the page gives you an idea of where our assets located are both on the utility side of the business as well as the renewable side of the business. Liberty, the company that I work for, we just rebranded from Algonquin Power Utilities. The parent company is Algonquin Power and Utilities Corp, but are rebranding to Liberty because Algonquin was too hard to spell. So within the renewable side of the business, we have about four point two gigawatts renewables and operations and under construction. And we're trying to double it, double that or even triple that in the next about ten years. So let's look to the next page. This is just specific to the renewable energy projects that we have underdeveloped, under constructed, recent operating. Just to kind of give you an idea of where you are, there's more within the little Liberty Power pamphlet that describes additional of our projects, but this just gives you an idea of where the renewable energy projects are located. This is just specific to solar and wind. We do also hydro renewables as well as bio gas as well. So to give you an idea of Liberty's approach, so right now specifically to wind, we have about a thousand five hundred forty-one turbines operating across North America, both Canada, United States. I'm here today because I want to build that long-term relationship. Rather than coming to you guys when we're ready to permit something or we're way far along the line to hear from the opposition about the project. I'd rather be the first person to contact so that you're aware that we're here prior to proceeding with anything. So through that, we want to bring economic benefits to the community and make sure that we're transparent. We want to know, we want to make sure everybody's aware of us that we're not trying to hide here. We want to know what everyone's opinions are, whether this is the right community, whether this is the right place, where we're that scouts already within the community and that's been going on for a while. So if we want to move away from that, we will be understanding and we just want to know that right away. So through our approach, we like to establish benefit agreements, pilot programs, roaders agreements. I work with county and townships, that's pretty standard these days for all projects. So there will be one here. And then decommissioning plans, I know that is a big one with most communities that they're very concerned about what happens to this infrastructure at the end of the day, or whether a company goes bankrupt. As a company, that's never happened to us, but anything is possible. You just never know. So we will establish decommissioning plans to make sure that at the end of the day, the land that these, this infrastructure is located on, that it will be restored. And that there is something like a decommissioning bond there that company was full bankrupt is not the community's responsibility to deal with it. So why did we specifically pick Crawford County? So just to give you an example of six different items that we look at when we choose a community for a new project, transmission line access. There is a significant number of transmission lines right in here. Any transmission line that is essentially bigger than about say over a hundred but around the one sixty-eight, two thirty-one size, that's when you start seeing projects like solar and wind. And that is definitely here, wind resource, it is windy. Today is a very windy day. So it's a good example of why we're here. Construction, constructability. We feel that this is an area that would be good for a project, fairly flat, with a lot of farmland. That's what you tend to target for a wind project zoning. I, I know there's been a lot going on here from what I've been able to read up on. So we will need to further discuss that when we get to that point. Available land. Not too many forests, not too many areas of desktop concern at this point, environmental attributes. You don't have a large river or any or a mountain or something that would scare us away. So that's another reason why we are here today and trying to build this relationship. So if we flip to the next page, this just gives you an idea of kind of how the evolution of turbines has happened. So this project specifically is our Shady Oaks project within your Paw Paw, Illinois. So when we first did this project, the first phase, we built that one in twenty eleven. It was seventy-one turbines. They're four hundred and ninety feet. One point six megawatts each in size. Now, on our project that we just finished construction earlier this year, we're looking at thirty-three percent taller, three hundred and seventy-five percent more power and seventy-six percent less turbines. So we have gone up to heights of six hundred and fifty-six feet. That's about what we're seeing standard now pretty much for all the turbines that we're able to purchase. From like Siemens, Hume, Vestas, any of the really any of them are going that or even higher these days. And we don't even want to talk about the heights of the offshore ones because those are triple in size. So a little bit crazy in terms of height these days, but that's what sorry.
They're primarily east coast.
They are now going into the lake near Chicago, about fifteen miles off of it. So So the project area of interest, so the area that we've focused our area on is in the southwest corner of the county. That is just our preliminary project area of interest. We haven't started any land acquisition. We haven't started talking to landowners. This is my first step trying to understand what, what the thoughts here are, what you think the thoughts of the community are. You've had the experience with Scout Clean Energy. There's been quite a, from my understanding, there's been a bit of opposition there and the ordinance revisions that have been looked at over the last year and a bit. So this project specifically is, we're looking at up to two hundred megawatts in size. That would be approximately thirty to forty-five turbines. At the, at the minimum size of six megawatts each. So the tip that we're looking at is about six hundred and fifty-six feet. That's the estimate that we have right now. Turbine technology changes essentially every year. So we won't be procuring anything this year or even next year. So this size and a year or two may, maybe bigger, most likely, at least in megawatts for sure. The turbine hit height, sorry, based on FAA, I'm, I'm pretty sure they're probably going to standardize it sooner or later. That they won't want anything too high in order not to interfere with military and airspace. In terms of setbacks, we'll need to work with that together. I know that there has been proceedings looking at changing the setbacks with the ordinance. I'm not sure where that is today as I wasn't able to find the ordinance online. So I know I've been able to read in newspapers, but that's about it. So yeah, the last thing I have is from April twenty-nine, twenty-two. So I'm sure there's been changes since then. So.
Our ordinance is presently a work in progress. Close. Pretty close. These are county attorney column, assistant county attorney Martha. So they are diligently working on it.
Yes, I'm expecting to come for the board within the next one.
You, you said you do solar too?
Yes, we do.
Is that something you've spied Crawford for?
It's always an opportunity. It's, it's interesting when we, we used to go forward with hybrid projects that our approach was we went, went wind and solar. But then, once you start bringing up solar, everyone's like, oh, we want the solar portion of the project and we don't want the wind. So we've kind of changed our approach. We want to care about the wind portion first. We still do offer the solar portion, but solar takes up so much more space. And it's usually when I talk to the counties, the counties are like, wait a second, that takes out a lot of our viable farmland. We don't want solar. Because Iowa was a very productive state in terms of crops. I've talked to other counties within Iowa and then they start bringing up their CSR. And they don't want their CSR essentially being impacted. So I don't know what the thoughts here are, but that's the reason I didn't propose solar here. Because I didn't think it made sense. If I'm totally wrong, please tell me because I'd like to know that.
We reviewed as mixed emotions. I think some people would probably rather have solar versus a, a windmill that you know, solar will stay pretty low off the horizon, will be seen for miles away, you know, so I'm not saying that the
Never heard complaints about the noise by solar, the, how it affects our, you know, view, people, you know, in our protests with the last one, it's just that constant flickering and the sound and just, you know, when you look out over the countryside. It's just, it just affects the view of it. That's a lot of the objection, just, you know, we like our beautiful. But we understand the importance of it and the value to it. So there's, you know, we
I like that you've got, you're down from a hundred and twenty-five to thirty-three.
I like that.
That, 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 that probably piques my interest above all because we, we, we're wanting to protect some of our more valuable resources in the county like our parks.
Right, right.
Which we have two of them, we're quite proud of. Plus, we're in for the economic development of our communities, you know, obviously Dennison's always a primary focus in that. And, and you're moderately close to Dennison.
Yep.
But all the other communities matter too. And so that's part of the stuff that's going to be in our ordinance. And if you can find ways to work with those types of things, I think you'll probably be a welcome addition. But we obviously our farmers are the ones that are, have the final say that have, you know, but I mean, we're putting everything in there where there'd be a variance. But you'll have your people that you got to see about that. And that'll be the zoning boards in particular to start with as we're looking at. But we want our cities to have some sort of saying, you know, if they want to reach out and develop things, you know, we, we don't want whether it's a wind tower or a pipeline interfering with, with development or anything like that. So that's these are the things that we're looking at. So you know what, we're, we're not, we're not standing in the way of business or the future. But we are, we don't want anything standing in the way of ours either. So.
Go down here and now see, there is one of those beautiful parks that we're talking about. So you can stay over here. Let's get this a little bit further away because there are is over here. So in your medicine, no matter which direction you look, then you're going to be. Let us kind of know what's going on.
Appreciate you coming in way in front of any project saying we've already spent sixteen million dollars in accounting. How can we get along? What's producing or do they bundle it up or, or they put together itself to somebody else?
Sure.
Operation.
Sure, yeah. So then being a commercial project, it will be sold into the grid. Whoever the off taker is, we don't know at this point. We don't have any kind of agreement with anybody, but it is going wherever the demand is.
Kind of likes because there's a dump station just south of Dennis.
Just a quick question in terms of on the map, just where is exactly the other project? There's two projects, okay.
West Wig area, there's a project.
We have existing.
That's already on the ground. So you can grab around, look at it. And then there's one in the southeast corner of the county. And that goes, extends over into Carroll County.
The summit project's there in
Oh, okay, okay.
And I think they've got everything pretty well satisfied.
Okay, that's good.
Now, your, yours are going to be significantly taller than what we were told theirs are about a hundred feet taller.
So that's going to affect.
There's six, instead they were thinking they would be like so yeah, they're
Cutting that down to thirty-three.
Scout gets going, they'll do the same thing.
Yeah, you're putting a lot of, getting a lot of power out of these now.
A lot.
What, 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 what is the, now like, we're, we're like at a forty-five, really forty-five decibels. Are you going to be able to maintain something of that nature? At the house foundation?
Yeah, I mean, that's becoming more and more common. We'll work with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, like we have got variances on other projects where that is required, but forty-five.
Seems like that was pretty in this, industry.
Yeah, it like, it is moving that direction. Like there are counties out there in different states that they still are at the sixty, fifty-five. Like that, that is still out there, but forty-five is definitely becoming more and more common these days and standard pretty much. So. Just it. And then also the proposed project timeline. This is the timeline that we're looking at right now. It's very tentative, nothing ready to stone. This is the project origination phase, which we're starting today. That's just me talking to the county. Then we'll, next through early later this year, and then through next year, we'll start the land acquisition phase, start talking to landowners, having community events. More of these kinds of meetings just to keep you, keep the county up to date about where we are as a developer with in terms of the project. When we get all our land side, we'll start looking at met tower installations to determine what the wind speeds look like. Those preliminary met towers that do install, the ones that could, they get taken down after a year. They're just to give us an idea of what the wind speeds are. It has happened in the past. Although we can get this kind of data through various different consultants, it's not often right. So that's why we put up these met tires to give us that one year worth of data that we can actually understand that the wind speeds are to figure out what the most suitable turbine is for this community. Not all turbines are meant for every area in any state. Some are better on top of things like hills and mountains. Some are better in areas that are flat. Some they just really, they just really change depending on we get all. And they just really, they just really change depending on we get all the wind speeds and what data we were able to collect through that. And then community engagement will continue throughout the project, that's not something that ends once we obtain our land, we'll have. Landowner events, landowner dinners, um, public open houses throughout the process, so. There'll be things like newsletters, mailouts going out, uh, door hangers being distributed throughout the community, so. And we'll have a website set up once we proceed with the project, so there'll be information out there, we'll provide that to the county as well to make sure that. Everything's out there and we're as transparent as we can be with our information. Uh, and then in twenty twenty-three, uh, that's when we'll start the permitting phase of the project, so that's when you'll start seeing consultants out there doing. Uh, studies like wetland studies, bot studies, beetle studies, uh, doing geotactical. Road surveys, all that kind of stuff that is required in order to get a permit. For our project, uh, we anticipate that after even the two years of surveying work, that we'll be looking at. Well, twenty, sometime in twenty twenty-five, we'll be approaching the county, uh, to obtain a permit, special use permit. Site plans and all that kind of stuff. And then we anticipate that we'll be going to construction in twenty twenty-five. And then sometime between twenty-five and twenty-five and twenty twenty-six, that's when we estimate that the commercial operations date, so that's when the turbines will be spinning and producing power and. Uh, transmitting that into the grid.
For a article.
Yeah.
When you are talking about this consultation and land acquisitions, before you start going to individual landowners, do you have like a pre-meeting where they all come in and hear about it? And then proceed to go to the landowners, are you gonna start with landowners and then have your meeting?
Yeah, so, so our, our estimate is that in early November, that we'll have, like a, open house that will have poster boards out there.
Next month or?
Yeah, next month, yeah, next month.
Next month.
Yes, yeah, next month is when we, we have this meeting that we have poster boards or representatives from the company. Or land acquisition agents there, talk to landowners, answer any questions. That's usually the way that we go, we don't usually approach landowners first.
Okay.
You know, yeah.
I just don't want to.
So we have that down in that area.
They're pitted against, I mean, against one another before they have a whole big idea what. So, are you going to notify everyone within the spread or do you just put out a public notice? How do you go about notifying people that are within your?
Sure, yes, absolutely, so the way that we proceed with these kinds of things, we approach, we try to use. I wanna put this, we use the county data to, uh, get our addresses. And from that, we build our mailout list. Every single landowner within the red boundary would be receiving the mail out, it doesn't matter how many, how many acres they own, everyone will get it, so. Uh, and then there'll be follow-ups from our land agents with the landowners to make sure that they're aware of the meeting. We'll be sending the same information to the counties that if you're interested, you can post it on your website. Uh, so that the community is aware from that perspective as well. Uh, we'll have land agents following up with individuals that contact us that provide their phone numbers, we won't be able to get their phone numbers without. You know, us, they only get it if they first get approached with, uh, the mailouts and door knockers will be provided as well, so. We'll try to approach them as many avenues that we can. If there's any other recommendations, we appreciate hearing about it because we want to be as transparent as possible.
Have a question.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so we actually are pretty proud of our hills.
Yes.
And we think that our county is the most beautiful one in the United States, if not the world. I, uh, we're gonna take away some of that scenic beauty. What's, would, what would be your proposal to help, you know, I mean, you're, you're looking at surrounding one of our parks.
Right.
And it's our more rural park, in fact.
Sure.
I mean, is there, is there a possibility you'd want to work with this board on doing some things that would offset and give some. You know, recreational value back to our county?
I mean, you're, if you've got any ideas, we're open to hearing them.
Okay, well, I might have a few.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, no problem.
November already. So you'll hold that probably like in that Dow City charter area.
Yeah, we'll try, like, we haven't, we haven't exactly looked at for venues, I want the best place for it, we still have to look into that, so. Open to recommendations and discover that we shouldn't, should not be going, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I'm an outside the box thinker, so.
Good.
I'm just looking back here, you're proposing. This. Full, I guess, where are you proposing for total megawatt?
Two hundred.
Two hundred?
Yes.
Is that like a site?
Thirty-three turbines roughly.
Yeah.
How big of a solar array would that take to accomplish the same? Can you answer that question?
Yeah, I definitely can, so. In order to submit a project into the interconnection queue, you guys are under MISO, so for every. Megawatts, you need five acres, so for a two hundred megawatt project, you need a thousand. Acres of land.
Oh, you'd cover a thousand acres of land?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's something good for the desert. Wow, there's not, there's many clubs there either.
There are, there, probably, we get that comment a lot, like, why don't you guys go to New Mexico, Arizona and all that, there's no transmission lines, like, that's our biggest problem.
We can do all you want, can't get it anywhere.
Exactly, so like, there's all these projects that are just sitting there and there's nowhere for the power to go, so.
Apparently, apparently, Mr. Booted Judge is looking for some money to spend, or he's got some money he's looking to spend on infrastructure, so maybe you should go it.
Not friends with him yet.
Be a good, might be a good networking.
So, for potential community and economic benefits, the biggest one is tax revenue, that's the one that is most interesting to communities. That there will be an increased revenue going into school boards into the county, depending on how that is essentially.
Yeah.
Employment, so for our project, we do try to hire as many local, yeah, sorry.
Is that typical for a, a site is the two hundred megawatt or whatever watt, watts, lots of watts? Is that your typical, you know, it seems to me that's about what scouts is too, isn't it?
Must be.
Is that what you typically look at for a, a, a wind farm, is that two hundred size?
Yeah, so for a project to be economically viable, it's, it's gotta be at least two hundred.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's harder to connect a smaller project onto these lines that are being proposed these days, like. There are three hundred and fifty-six, the new lines that are being proposed by Mike, by the MidCon Interconnection System Operator, all the new ones we're building are three hundred and bigger. So there's lines out there that are eight hun, eight, up to eight hundred that we're seeing now being proposed, and in order to connect onto it. For us, in order to be viable, it needs to be over two hundred, because then it's just expensive and it just doesn't make sense.
Understand, it doesn't make sense. So I just wondered why you were looking at two hundred versus one hundred versus five hundred.
Yeah, like, I mean, we have proposed six hundred megawatt projects in Illinois, like, split between solar and wind storage, so those projects are out there. Uh, but when we did our initial desktop, what we were able to fit within that red box was two hundred megawatts. And so for employment, we do try to work as, with as many locals as we can, that's during construction operations phases of our project. For a two hundred megawatt project in size, that's about three hundred and fifty employees during that phase, and then in operations. Uh, full-time, it's between ten and twelve, is the estimate based on a two hundred megawatt project. Contract opportunities, there is a lot of economic offshoot benefits that come out of projects like this, but. Individuals are using local hotels, going to local restaurants, going to local stores in order to, uh, buy things that are required for the project, so. Uh, that's one of the opportunities there, land use, so with wind projects, that's why we usually. Go forward with wind first is, cause it's a more compatible use in comparison to solar, it doesn't take as, as much space for one wind turbine. Uh, it takes up to three acres versus a thousand acres for a two hundred megawatt project, it's much smaller and usually. There is a preference from that from farmers, cause they're able to, uh, go around the turbines and still farm all the way up to the access roads, so. It's a little bit more compatible use and it allows for agricultural uses to remain, except for the portion of infrastructure number, building it, that's the only time that. Makes a little bit more difficult for agricultural uses to proceed. In terms of capital infrastructure, there'll be improvements to things like local roads, that will be upgrading those so we can bring the equipment in. And then the last one being clean electricity generation. The reason why there's such a rush right now for renewable energy projects is the state has set a target of a hundred percent by twenty thirty-five. So as a developer, we're trying to assist with trying to reach that goal. Everyone's right now in Iowa, it's probably the most popular state right now because of that goal being twenty thirty-five, so.
What? Because of what?
Uh, the state has set a hundred percent goal to, for the all renewable energy generation by twenty thirty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
They're, they're buying it, they're. Taxes, taxes are pretty damn good, that's what the state did. When our green energy doesn't come to us and goes to state.
Indeed, yeah, that's why.
And they won't change the tax rate.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five percent. But anyway, she's not here for that today.
I noticed your, in your thing here, you have Illinois is pretty heavy, is that transmission or is that more?
All renewable energy generation.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, we have.
Like in Chicago with the Con Ed's about eight and a half, nine cents or.
Not in Chicago.
Yeah, it's hard to get close to Chicago, we, we did try a project that was about fifty miles outside of Chicago and did not happen.
All the airspace, they need around that.
That, that too, FAA is very stringent within Illinois, so we do have about, I can count in my head, between solar and wind, there's probably at least ten projects at this point. And three, four within development right now, so Illinois is starting to run out of group for projects, so.
But ten, as big as, as big as Illinois is?
Yeah, there's, there's very stringent ordinancees being implemented there in order to prevent additional projects, so. It makes it difficult. And then, as a developer, we try to do as much local community support opportunities as possible. There's some examples that have, that we've done in the past, so we try to build as many partnerships as part possible, provide as many donations as we can. We would, if we proceed with the pattern, we will be part of the community, so we want to make sure that where there is needs for additional donations or. Anything that we want to make sure that we make ourselves available for that, so.
Like trains and stuff.
Yeah, what, whatever the community needs.
You're tracking now?
Alright, so that's the, I mean, presentation, I don't know if there's any questions or any comments?
Very good presentation, very informative, I really appreciate the heads up of what's going on, thanks a lot, like, you know, just.
Thanks for doing us the.
Really appreciate it.
Respect to coming.
And we will be at your meetings.
Perfect, yeah, no, I appreciate it.
Please keep us informed on your meeting, we'd like to be, um.
Real nice.
There'll be questions for us, Adam, too.
We need it. She'll need information as far as that, when that gets done.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, and the supervisor should also indicated one point when you do a solar energy ordinance, okay, that'll be another thing to.
Okay, yes, solar will most likely come with this project, I would not be surprised, that seems to be pretty common that they end up, we end up having both, but.
What is your typical size of a, I mean, obviously you said you need a hu, a thousand acres to accomplish, but this is the one. When, when you, you know, like, we've got a little solar field on top of that.
Cool.
Yes.
Okay, is that the typical? I mean, is that typically what you have, is little things like that dotted around the community or?
So.
How does that typically work?
Sure, so for a commercial project, it's a little bit different than your community-based one, first, so we like to be. Within one mile of your transmission line, so when there's a transmission line, that's more common where we'll find a solar project. And for it to make sense, your project is about, gonna be like a one-mile box. So, within that, we try to get a thousand acres or as close to that one mile.
You realize there's only six hundred and forty acres.
It was only six hundred and forty a mile.
Yes, yeah, no, but within that one mile, so whether it's one mile this way or one mile that way, so it's two miles. So it makes sense on each side.
To gobble up a thousand and twelve hundred acres.
Have fun with that, Robert Galloway.
That's why I was wondering how, I mean, there's probably. People that might, I don't know.
Eighteen thousand dollars an acre. Yeah, we value our crop going very highly around here, and very productive, so.
You know, they, our hills don't always do the best, but they always do. They'll support a family or more.
What I've seen by you, they must.
How are they, you also share?
Beans are a little short.
Yeah.
Corn is like, I don't know where it came from.
Good genetics in the seeds, Ogenmeyer, look at you guys go.
I can raise corn without water, but we're good. Anyways, any other questions?
No.
Olivia, I appreciate you coming, like I said, just want to re.
Yes, absolutely.
Really appreciate you and your, your liberty of power coming to us before. The process already begun, it's on the back.
Oh.
You can't put that in your wallet? In the wallet.
Inside the bigger.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
I have like so many business cards, there's like too many.
Yes, we'll have them.
Yeah, absolutely. This is for.
They come all the way from Canada.
Next to Scott, you would like to be at the top of that card.
That doesn't matter, they just got bought anyways, so.
They did what?
Thank you, they just got purchased.
Clean energy.
Yes, that was, that was just.
They didn't last as long as I thought they would.
Scott Clean Energy just got purchased by Brookfield.
They're out of, they're out of Denver.
Yes, well, they're not even, they won't be, so.
Where they, where they own?
I wear, I don't know where Brookfield headquarters are, but that's, we won't come now.
Brookfield.
Renewables.
So are you guys looking to stay or are you looking to be brought on to?
I, I, our, our company model is that we develop, own and operate, we don't sell our projects, like, there are other companies that stake within our projects, but we operate them, so. Yeah, we're not selling, we're not selling our projects, we're not, we don't have that type of model, so.
Okay, good to hear.
Yeah.
So you'll be invested in our community?
Yes, correct, yeah.
So these, obviously, there'll be a, you'll have a facility most likely in that box?
Yes, so we will open an office within that, so we'll have a permanent office within that community that would.
So that's where these ten to twelve employees will re, work?
Yeah, like a plus.
So, yes, but there will be a permanent, uh, operations and maintenance building. That they will work out of, right now during this phase of the project, we just get a local office somewhere within the community, it's not usually a permanent office, but it'll be somewhere that landowners can come in anywhere.
Occupy that office. If you would remodel a basement. Just say, just say we make it.
We know a town or two, so.
We know some empty buildings also.
So.
But that's nice to hear that you're actually gonna be invested, see, cause that's what I've been always worried about, is like with Scout, this doesn't surprise you to hear that they were sold.
Yeah.
So now you got somebody that's really got, has the initial investment in the community, that's why I also asked you. If you're willing to think outside of the box and your support of the community, you know, cause we've got two, two packing facilities.
Right.
That, uh, you know, um, do a lot to support the communities here, a lot. And they invest a lot of money in this, so that's, if you're here long-term, that, that, that sounds better to me. Because it sounds like somebody you want to take care of the community just like they do, now you don't have the employee. Draw that they do, so that they probably won't hate having you around, mind you, but they, uh, and that's supposed to be funny, but the, uh. But they, uh. That also means though that you're occupying a lot of our property, our, our community skyline in particular, but. I mean, if you, if you're, if you're gonna be a, an invested partner in our communities, that's, that's what I like to hear.
Yes, no, definitely, if you have ideas for anything that it may be, please do approach me with anything, like whether it's donations or. Thanksgiving's coming up, like there's a local food bank that needs something, like let us know.
Always needs help.
Well, we got a list for you.
Yeah, no, send it my way, it's, it's like the amount of meetings I go to, and then I'm like, we are willing to donate to community, what do you mean?
We can put you in a real nice position.
No one says anything.
We're not shy.
We're sure.
Anything else for Olivia?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Yes, you have my number, call.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, anything comes up?
We will.
Okay.
Yeah, this afternoon.
Is that an international call?
Oh, that's true, I will send you my way, a one-eight-hundred number, I have one of those.
Okay.
Or email or whatever.
That'll work. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this card's an international call. On your card.
Let me pull the one eight hundred number up. I'll give you that too.
Okay. Cause I I'm pretty sure Laura's gonna cry if I try to turn in the bill for having to call you in Canada.
It would crass is an understatement.
Why is she doing that? Should we move into citizens input? Citizens input.
Also take up too much of your time. We're just hoping that you'll consider me tomorrow morning and we'll be happy to bring back more maps if we need to. And discuss it as well. I know that we didn't make it on the agenda. It's just fine. So we just were hoping because it's due on Thursday. We want to apply on Wednesday. Cause if you've ever dealt with those kind of grants. Applying on the day is due, you're looking at hours to try and fill stuff and.
I'm actually gonna cut craft time short. So we can have a meeting at ten.
Yeah. She was looking forward to playing with some grants.
Hope you also got the answers to your questions that you're looking for and having the other side. Thank you very much. We'll see you in the morning.
Do you guys have any? We got some traction on the Kenwood deal, Martha.
Yes, Paul and I are working with Brad, but it's Brad owner, but it seems that. Some of the stars have aligned that we can move forward. And hopefully that the buyer is still interested.
I think I've been a couple weeks since he's contacted me. I mean, yeah, I think he still is, so. Perfect. Dan, you have any? Alright.
Olivia, find that number.
The number is one eight three three. Six three one, one zero five nine.
Thank you very much.
Will that get us directly to you?
Yes, it goes directly.
You are important. Okay, with that, anything else? Move and sign to return.
Ladies have spoken.
Paul in favor, signify by saying a. All opposed. Alright.
So that's that portion of the. Whether or not. Without a competitive bid.
Okay.
What we found, what I found was so the payment was forty five hundred, right? Wasn't he cut fifteen hundred earlier?
He gets fifteen hundred a month. So we've started paying him forty five a quarter. Cause he doesn't cash checks. So it's fewer checks out.
Oh, okay.
He gets forty five a quarter.
So it's over.
So he gets forty five a quarter.
Yes, fifteen hundred a month.
It would be significantly over.
Yeah.
So. I'll have to call contact. And I want one more about.
He's just a consultant.
But that's kind of the the crux of that report was. Okay, so I, so we found the fifteen hundred. So we thought, okay.
Which was a month.
Yeah, so we thought, okay, so the fifteen forty five is a right six. That's probably what we're doing, but I didn't know this forty five.
Just hold on to those checks and so that makes it hard to reconcile. He never cashes them.
I I didn't want to give you more to do, but there's a little more to do.
Gotta do it.
Joni and I had a long talk about how there's always more to do.
Right, no, that's why timeline it. It's not, okay. Very optimistic in the beginning and I don't have that optimism anymore. Oh, I'm sure it was. But just seeing the work F D H did just on our bathrooms.
I know.
That's awesome.
I know. But I don't see this, this, you know, that was kind of what he had wanted to be.
Right. Right.
I I saw though his wheels turning.
I just don't want to miss anything. Professional. Fills some of the gaps that may exist in that.
Do you think we could watch?
Proposals.
Right.
What the dollars are in those proposals because the cuts need to happen. Won't happen necessarily because then it brings about more expense of. Repairing floor.
And for me, these. That just brings in such a huge issue because when we.
In there for the bathrooms.
City center.
I'm being honored.
We're not used to that. Alright, I think I.